Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District May 17th School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
So, welcome to the May 17th School Board Meeting. We'll call the roll. Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Sorensen.
Present.
Trustee McOwen.
Present.
Trustee Miller is absent. And Trustee Turnquist. And President Saunders.
Did you ask for Jeff Red?
Trustee Red.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So before we get started, we have to appoint Ken Silva as Clerk Pro Tem. Can we get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
I'm sorry, what? Motion to what?
Oppose?
To have him as Boy Clerk.
Oh, I agree.
Usually, we go right into public speaking, but tonight, we have a hard stop at 7:30, and we have some students here that want to present. Trustee White has something that she wants to do on her committee. What's your committee today? Yes, I would like to introduce a good friend of mine, Michelle Adderbury. She's a teacher at Denzel Washington School of the Arts, and she's a sixth-grade teacher. This is her first year at Denzel. She was at Pennington for many years. And her children set up a, I don't want to say too much, a Freedom Cafe, and they're here to tell you all about it.
Good evening, everyone. So my kids thought they were closer to seven, and so I only have one, two, three.
We have a hard stop at 7:30.
That's fine. I'm just telling, so I'll just, I'll run through it.
You can wait, but at 7:30, we have a hard stop to go and exec with one of the attorneys, and that's gonna be, that probably will be an hour, at least. So it's up to you.
Okay, I'll just take the kids that I have, okay?
Okay, all right.
Let me have Timothy. You two, come. Timothy, you want to join us, even though you were here to, come on. And Amelia. Oh, here they go. Look at, here they go. Thank you, look, come.
Oh, they're all here.
Yay. Okay, take the kids that are gonna serve. I love these. What's Ms. Adderbury's favorite saying? Embrace the what?
Crazy.
And this is the crazy. Okay, take the kids that are gonna serve, take them in the back. Those of you that are gonna take the table, have a seat. I'll introduce you guys. You're gonna sit here. You wanna sit with them? Okay. So let's just give them a second. You good, Amani? Okay. Well, first, thank you for having us. Where do I start? My name, like she said, I'm Michelle Adderbury. I work at the wonderful Denzel Washington School of the Arts, and I teach sixth grade, E.L.A., and social studies, along with Tanya Mack, my colleague. She's somewhere in here. She teaches science and math. We all know there was a tragedy a few weeks ago when one of our students was tragically killed in the city. And right before her funeral, we had a memorial, we had a service for her that Friday, and we went down to the auditorium to celebrate her life. And when it was over, we came upstairs, and one of my kids, she came upstairs to me, and she was hysterically crying. Sorry. She was hysterically crying. And I said, "What's the matter?" And she said, "Ms. Adderbury, it's not just about the student. It's my brother." And I said, "Your brother?" She said, "My brother was tragically killed around the same time, around the same neighborhood many years ago." And there were two grief counselors who had come from Pennington, who had come upstairs just to visit and see my kids. And I said, "You're not gonna believe this, but there's two people here if you want to talk to them right now, and then I'll see you when the class is over." She said, "Absolutely." She did. And when I sat down at my desk, I thought, "The kids are not gonna talk in an assembly." So if I say to them, "How are you feeling?", they're not gonna speak. And just like that, I thought, "What about a cafe?" And the Freedom Cafe was born. So what I did was, that was on a Friday, I told the kids, "Listen, how about a cafe? We're reading this book. It kind of mirrors what's happening in Mount Vernon. It was about a girl in a gang. And her parents, grandparents, her father, mother, what do you do when you're faced with this lifestyle?" So it kind of mirrored, and I thought, "Well, let's talk about it without talking about it." And I'll let them express themselves in small group. I don't want to tell you too much." So their presentation is about eight to 10 minutes. If they can't do the part, the plan was that they would speak to the presentation we created, show you what they created, and then I asked them a few questions. They would share with you their responses. They were very, very raw and honest. And I think sometimes we get lost in the minutia of the politics of school, and we forget that the kids have a voice, and they really have something to say. So when we were asked to come, we were extremely grateful. I'll go with what I have. What they were going to do is create a mini café for you. Because of COVID and the time, my kids are gonna prepare your food. They voted. You're going to have chocolate chip cookies. They said they had to be soft. Lemonade, and they have pound cake for you. So I'm just gonna ask Ms. Mack, if you would take them in the back, put their gloves on, let them make their plates. While we do our presentation, they're going to serve you. We put some candles on for you. Our jobs are stressful enough. The kids will walk you through their presentation, and I just have one person to speak at the end, and we'll be out of your way, okay? All right. I heard I get a clicker. Oh. With the clicker. Okay, come here, kids. Quick, quick, quick. Just give one to all the adults sitting there. Okay. Here we go. Ms. Adderbury, sixth grade, Freedom Cafe. The folders that you're holding, so here, give that to them as well. And then if any of our kids come, just tell them to pull up a seat. Did you give one to everybody there? There's one missing, right there. Okay, let me get started, because we don't want to hold up your time. Let me see if I remember. Is it on? No. Come on. Tech guy. Okay. So this is the book, and this is the movie. They read Life and Death, and that's the movie they watched, Freedom Riders. I will have, they had a microphone for the kids. Where is it? Okay, turn the mic on, and when it's your slide, you can just speak to it, okay? Come on, Khadijah. She's one of mine. Can she come in? Come. Just here. You can pull my chair. Take this chair. Thank you. He has a chair for you. Thank you so much. You're gonna sit with them. You're gonna go serve with them in the back. Here we go. Okay. So here we have Freedom Riders. This is the book, and this is the movie that they compared. And next, we have... You said just press it, right? Oh.
The first thing we did was brainstorm.
Good evening, my name is...
Oh, good evening, my name is Kamor Wharton, and the first thing we did was brainstorm. First, we voted on a theme which was dark academia. Second, we voted on a name which was Freedom Cafe. The logo we chose was a bird in a cage, because in the book, Life and Death, Maria refers to herself as a bird in a cage, because she grew up in the gang life. Everybody in her family was a part of the gang, as well as her friends. So she felt like, when she grew older, she had to be a part of the gang.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Amani Andrews. The academic menu was a list of goals that we completed and that we wanted to achieve that day. It contained comparing and contrasting novel and the movie. Next, we discussed in our small groups about the novel Life and Death and the movie Freedom Riders. Lastly, we asked our D.O.K. questions. D.O.K. means depth of knowledge, which is high-order thinking.
Good afternoon, my name is Khadijah Lewis. We decided on the menu by first discussing what we would like to have in the café. Second, we discussed who would bring what to the café. Lastly, we went over who had food allergies, and removed the items that we needed. We also had jobs. Half of the class was working on the invitations, and the other class was working on a café logo. We decided on the bird in the cage logo and another student's invitation.
Oh, Ms. Adderbury, this clicker. Okay, hold on. This shouldn't have been my job. Jeez. You said it would work. Okay, so that's their menu. The folders that you have, you'll hear the kids talk about D.O.K. or quotes, or, oh, three, two, ones. All of that stuff is inside your folder, because the presentations sometimes go so fast or quickly that you won't get a chance to see. But it's inside the folder to further explain what they did. There's no sound. So this is them when they're creating everything. It has sound. So this is them, they're preparing, just getting ready, their menus and all of that. I'll keep going.
Good evening, my name is Timothy. For the Inspiration Board, we decided to choose two important people from the movie we watched was the Freedom Riders. We decided to choose Ms. Gurrell, the teacher who taught the students in the Freedom Riders movie, and Anne Frank, who wrote a book called The Diary of Anne Frank, which has inspired many people.
Good evening, my name is Keira Hall, and in September, we did an art project called The Graffiti Project. Then we read the book Life and Death, and we heard about the man named Wes Moore. Wes Moore did graffiti and almost got arrested for it. So in April, we did another art project where we drew ourselves again, but this time, we wrote our names in graffiti. We did Then and Now to show all our growth from September to April.
So that's their now, and the two together. There's the before and after.
Good evening, my name is Adrian Rodriguez. We wrote down things to do and checked them off once we were finished. For example, we took out clipboards for our three, two, one. A three, two, one is three things we learned, two things we found interesting, and one question we had.
So one of you just take it. Take it with the Khadijah.
Hi, my name is Khadijah Lewis, and what we did was, we took our invitations, and we invited our major, our major teachers. After that, we invited the rest of the staff to come to our Freedom Cafe.
We set the tables in groups of four, and then we put labels on the cups.
How come the sounds not coming on?
Uh, Freedom Cafe. Freedom.
Freedom, yeah. How about you, Jackson? Yeah, that's about, that's about sums it up. That's about sums it up. Welcome to the Freedom Cafe. Can you pause that, please? Okay, I'm recording you guys. Do you have anything you want to say before our... Okay. So pause that. There you go. Adrian?
Hi. So we sanitized the desks and the counter, then we put tablecloths to match the dark academia theme. We put flameless candles on the table and the clipboards for our three, two, one. Now it's showtime.
Okay, now you can play it. You see the person who ordered what they made these? We put quotes where the guests could take home. We made labels. And here's our menu. And so this is right before the kids walked in to actually have the cafés. Two classes, 601 and 602. And the video you'll see after this is the actual café happening. And they did it in, this was all done in three days. There's their academic board. Is there a way you can turn it up maybe? And this is where it all started. Just thoughts on paper. So this is class 602. 601 served them. And that's class 601 serving class 602. Okay.
After the café, we played a game called The Line Game. We saw The Line Game when we watched the movie Freedom Riders. The Line Game works when you put a piece of tape on the floor, and if you agree with the question, or can answer the question with yes, you would step up to the line. Some questions Ms. Adderbury asked us were, "Do you feel safe in school? Do you know that you're able to talk to your teachers without anything? And have you ever lost someone due to the pandemic?" The last and very best question that Ms. Adderbury asked us was, "Do you know that Ms. Adderbury is the mom?"
Absolutely. Okay. Do we have time for maybe just to ask one question and get their response, or no? Yes? Okay. Let me see. Let's pick. I'm gonna go with, what was one thing you walked away with after the café?
One thing I walked away with after we did the café was that our class goes to the extent to do anything extraordinary, because we didn't have to do the café. We could have just did a group discussion about what the movie and book was about. We could have sat there, read the book, answered questions, but we didn't do that. We did it over a table full of decorations, table full of food, and we really enjoyed ourselves.
And they were not coached. I told them the questions I would answer, and I told them to be as honest and raw as they wanted to. Go ahead.
So what I walked away from the café is, I felt proud of the work that me and my class did, that, and we did it in a short amount of time, I could say, because we took, like, four days. And like Keira said, we didn't even have to do it. We could have just answered questions and didn't do anything.
Um, to me, the café showed me that Ms. Adderbury cared about how much fun we had in the classroom and making learning fun, because we could have just wrote, we could have just did pen and paper, and instead of talking and discussing with people and doing this, it was fun. So, like I said, that just shows how much Ms. Adderbury cares for learning.
Oh. You get an A.
What I walked away with being in the café was being able to have fun discussing with my friends at school about the lesson, instead of doing quizzes and tests.
Can I ask another question quickly? How do you stay strong when life puts obstacles in your way?
I meditate. I take my time. I...
That's good. You can, that's fine.
I stay calm when I see an obstacle. When I see an obstacle, I face it as soon as I see it, because it's an obstacle, so you could just break through it.
Absolutely. Pass it along. Thank you, Timothy. Come here, Mom. Stay here with me.
I talk to people that I trust. I go to them when I need them. I also have to trust in myself. I make, I make, I make sure that I'm okay whenever I use my confidence. I make sure I have my confidence. I do daily affirmations, so I have faith in myself, and... So when life gives me obstacles and problems, my major is dance, so sometimes I like to dance and put all my emotion into that. But like what Amani was saying, Ms. Adderbury has us do affirmations in the morning, and it helps me boost my self-confidence. So I like to just repeat them to myself. And I could talk to Ms. Adderbury anytime I'm feeling upset, and my guidance counselor. So that's really how I dodge problems in my life, is I go to talk, or I boost my self-confidence.
I stay strong when obstacles put my, how I do it is, I usually, like, figure out my, like, hobbies. I like to play games, or I like to call with my friends. I usually play baseball to get it off, but that's not all. I draw with my sister. And I act, act and sing. Sorry for my...
That's fine. Well, stop there, because we've lost the time. Come, Dior. Come. You're not in any trouble. No one put you on the spot. We didn't do anything. Come. So this is Dior's mom. This is Dior. Dior is the reason that I had the café. And her mom came, but she just wants to say, just quickly say something, just to share, because as a teacher, you put together lessons, and you only know what happens in the classroom. So you don't really get to see what happens at home. You hope you did the right thing, you hope your time was spent well, but she's here, and I put her on the spot, because again, we thought, this is my first time meeting her, because we've only seen each other on Zoom. So I'm like, "Are you Dior's mom?" So I asked her, would she come and share at the end? And whatever you feel led to say at this point, because you're kind of on the spot, Dior, you can have a seat, because you look like a deer in headlights. You can share whatever you feel comfortable with sharing, okay?
Good evening, all. My name is Miriam Williams. I'm the mother of Dior, as she said. The reason why I felt this café was important is because with the murder and all, and all that's going on in Mount Vernon, my daughter came home the night that the young lady Kayla was killed, and she came in to see me, and she was like, um, she came to get dressed to do something. I think she was gonna dance, whatever. And she came in, and I was bawling and in tears, and she's like, "Mom, why are you in tears?" In 2009, my son Douglas was actually murdered. He was 16 years old. He was a junior at Mount Vernon High School. He was also stabbed to death. So this thing hit home personally for us. She didn't understand, "How can I have such a reaction to somebody I never met?" But like I told her, when these things happen, it affects the community, it affects the parents. I also have another parent here with me, Wilma Frank. Come, Wilma. 16 years before my son was murdered, her son was murdered. He was also a high school student. So she came to me 16 years later and said, "The same thing happened to my son, Andre Frank." So, I mean, we have affected, because we lost our children, we will never meet our grandchildren, and I mean, it just, it's a continuous thing, and it hurts so bad, the fact that this could, this could actually happen again, and again, and again, and nobody feels the pain in the loss of the families, okay? So I was explaining to my daughter, but she's like 11 years old, and she's not quite understanding or getting the picture, because she's like, "Huh? You didn't know her?" And I'm like, "Oh, baby, anybody, this could have been anybody's child." I mean, it affected me terribly, because I said, "Wow, another child stabbed?" I mean, it's just, and then the really hurting part was when I heard it was another child that stabbed a child. So I was like, "When is this gonna end?" This cycle just keeps repeating itself over and over and over again, and we, as a community, we have to do something. We have to do better. We are losing our babies, and this is all black-on-black crime. My baby was the 29th murder in the 29th month, and while we were at his funeral, there was another young lady shot and killed. So this is, something has to be done. Ms. Frank?
You put me on the spot, too. Good afternoon. My name is Ms. Wilma Frank. I was Andre Frank's mother, student from Mount Vernon High School. 30 years ago, he was shot to death. He was an honest student. And any child who get killed touch our hearts, because we know the pain and the suffering that mothers and families and friends go through. What I want to say to the parents, be, parents' involvement is very important. When your children come home, question them. Ask them, "How was your day today? What did you do?" Have a conversation with your children, and follow up with whatever they tell you. You must listen to them, because children go through stuff. They might not want to just come to the, to the mother or the parents, the father, and tell you stuff. So, but if you ask them questions, I used to do that with my son every day. I'd say, "Andre, how was your day today? What did you do in school? Do you have homework? May I see it?" And then you open up a conversation. But I believe parents now, because they have to work, especially black women, hallelujah to us. We, we, we have to take care of so much, we have to work so hard, we, we do not have the time always to be at the school, but it is important. You have to make time to be in your child, your child involvement in school. You have to talk to your child teacher. You even have to talk to the superintendent if they're not doing right. Yes, it's important. So it is very painful for us, because we know, we went through the pain. Another, under us, the children, friends, you don't, you don't know how it affects them, because this is the friend that got killed. And you have to have things in place when those things happen, to have people to talk to them, to, to, to make them know that you will be safe, everything will be all right. We are here for you. We all have to go back to the, the time when one, what would they say? It takes a village to raise a child. We just can be so busy that when the children come home, you, you don't ask them anything, you're too busy to cook in, you're too busy sleeping. I'll talk for the whole day, so go ahead.
And I'd just like to say... And I'd just like to say thank you to the teachers that made this happen and allowed the children to have a platform to express themselves, because this doesn't happen every day in schools. And the fact that my daughter was comfortable enough with her teachers to talk about the tragedy... tragedy and what I was going through at home from the incident, that lets me know that they're doing an awesome job. So I'm just so thankful for the teachers, okay?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so that wasn't part of the program, but, um, I'm gonna wrap it up because I don't want to get in the way. Just want to say thank you for having us. Uh, please, can we just give my kids a big round of applause? Thank you so much. Okay, so kids, um, let's meet out in the hall so that we can get out of everyone's way and, um, yes, thank you and Ms. White.
Thank you, thank you so much for your presentation, thank you.
Sure, what were you gonna say?
And I want to say, I was gonna say, thank you to your class 6A, you're doing an awesome job and Michelle, you are awesome.
Thank you.
Native and God gave you that talent.
That's my mother, yes. I agree, it's just a gift.
Your kids are awesome. Every class I have ever been to see you work, I've always left feeling like your kids are top-notch.
Thank you so much, that means the world to me, thank you. Let's go, guys and girls.
Um, Ms. At, Ms. Atterbury, Ms. Atterbury?
Yes.
I want to say thank you so much. I know you from way back and I know you always had the kids, um, um, I mean, interest at heart.
Yes.
And I want to let you know, moving forward, we are going to create a platform that we can showcase our teachers and our kids more.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So that we can continue to remind people what we are all about.
Yes, I really appreciate it, thank you, Dr. B.C.
So, I, I promise you that.
I love to hear it, thank you so much. Can I just brag about my kids just one second? The water bottles that you have, that's their emblem, they created, the bird in the cage, they wrapped those for you and we did this in two days. Uh, Mrs., we didn't have a lot of time, they were so excited. If you look through the folders, oh, can we end with their Atterbury affirmations? Stop it, okay, here we go. So in the morning, I say good morning to each kid and then at the end, I look them in the eye, they look me in the eye and I say, "Good morning, sixth grade," and what do you say? Yes. Come in here. And I will do it scared. Hundred percent of the shots I do not take. My recipe for success, study while others are sleeping. Dream while others are wishing. If I reach for the moon and I miss, I will still be amongst the stars. Some may have more, some may have less, there's no one better than me, not better than anyone else. And the future? Yes, you are. Property owner, international traveler. My kids rock, I'm just saying. Thank you so much. Can I just say that, and then I promise I'm getting out of the way, Charlene Atterbury, stand up. So this is my mother, this was my first teacher and where I got the affirmations, thank you, where I got the affirmations was a little girl, probably about six or seven, and Charlene would stand me in front of the mirror, like stand up in the bathroom and, "What do you see?" And I'm like, "What do you see?" I said, "I see me, what do you see?" She said, "No, tell yourself, you're a pretty black girl." And I'm like, "A pretty black girl? What is that?" She went on and on, "And you're smart and you're all this." So by the time I got around adults, I'm not intimidated really by anybody and I don't mean that in an arrogant way, but it was instilled in me when I was young. It doesn't matter how much money you have, how rich or how poor, you be proud of who you are and where you come from. And so when I got in the classroom, I just changed it, modified it, but thanks to my mom, the kids are saying what they're saying today. God bless you all and thank you for having us.
That was great, that was absolutely great. Do they, do they, you think they want the candles?
And I want to thank the board for allowing me to bring that 6A to us.
All right, so we have, um... Do we need to do communications from the public now? All right, we're gonna start communications from the public. Uh, we have a hard stop at 7:30, so what we don't finish by 7:30, we're gonna have to come back, okay? So let's get the first speaker.
I have to read the statement.
Oh, you want to read a statement?
The Mount Vernon Board of Education recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of board policy. Speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 P.M. of the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person or by phone. Board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism, and wherever identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or the Mount Vernon educational official or employees strictly prohibited, and any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker is, uh, Sakai Brown.
Uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Don't know how I could follow that up, so I'm not going to. Um, it's a little intimidating, this is my first time here, uh, my name is Sakai Brown. I am a parent of a first grader at Nelson Mandela Jose Zalacoffer School and, um, I'm also the vice president of our newly formed PTA. Um, I came here with, with letters, um, but then I got a phone call from my, uh, parent liaison, uh, Mrs. O'Connor, that she had spoken to the new superintendent and I guess our issue was kind of resolved, but I still wanted to be a face so that you guys can see that we're active and we're trying, um, we want you guys to be involved in our PTA. We welcome new members, we welcome anyone who wants to come and be a part. Um, I'm, I'm a resident of Mount Vernon and I grew up here and I'm excited to be a part of, of, um, my daughter's education. Um, and so the letter that my, the reason why I was here was we were requesting for school crossing guards, um, the school's located on Gramerton Avenue and it's extremely busy, it's like a thoroughfare. I had a letter, I'm not gonna read it because after Ms. Atterbury, I want my daughter in her class and she's only in first grade. Um, and so I'm not gonna take up any more of your time, I appreciate just being here and having the opportunity, um, and again, thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to respond to you, Sakai.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that this morning at 6 o'clock, I, when I got up this morning, I called the mayor and we had that discussion about the, the, um, the crossing guard. And we spoke about how we can solve the issue because the last thing we want is to have a truck or a car hit one of our babies and then we becomes reactive. So we talked about it and we came up with a plan and by next week, we are supposed to have a crossing guard. If you don't have one, a police officer will be there until we get one.
Thank you so much.
But we are working on it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Nayima Burgess.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Dr. Nayima Burgess. I am a child of God first, I'm a parent, um, and I too am on the PTA at Nelson Mandela. I'm the president. Um, I am busy, um, I do own a business, but it is very important for me to be involved in my son's life. So in going forward with the, um, deciding to get involved with the PTA, I said, "Oh, it's COVID, the only parents that are gonna be able to go into the school and be present are the people on the PTA board." So here I am, um, and we are, we are present, we, we are visual, uh, we're in the school. Um, I am here for the same reason, the crossing guard, and it was resolved today and I'm so grateful because it is so scary crossing that, that street to pick up our babies. Um, uh, thank you for hearing us, thank you for your job, what you do, thank you for your hearts and, uh, we do want to partner with you and, and come and see what we're working on at Nelson Mandela.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next speaker is Erica St. Hilaire. Our next speaker is Tanya Mack.
Good evening, board and staff. Um, would all our Denzel Washington parents and teachers just please stand with me? Um, they're all here in support. Um, I sent a email to you, I'm not sure if you received, yes, I'm not sure, um, you were able to receive, I'm just gonna give Mr. Diggs a little bit of my time. Um, we are very concerned as a staff, as parents, um, as students with our principal, Dr. Collins, we are, don't understand why she is not with us for almo, almost two months. Um, the letter, I'm just gonna read a little bit, every day, same thing, where's Dr. Collins? There's a deep sense of concern and worry. Um, as you saw, um, Ms. Atterbury is actually my sixth grade colleague and we're able to do things like that because Dr. Collins just opens the door for creativity, um, she's not hovering over us, she trusts us, um, um, she's just...
Please refrain from using names, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not know that, I'm so sorry. Um, our principal at the Denzel Washington School of the Arts, so we, right, so we're treated with respect, we're treated as professionals, um, it's a great environment, um, as you can see, the students love being there, the teachers love being there, um, they're thriving and we just don't understand, they're greeted with hugs, she, they go into her office, they get water, they get food. I, I don't, I've never, I've been here, this is my 17th year in the district as a teacher, I've never seen the open door policy, you can go in there, students can go in there, teachers can go in there and talk to her, um, and we're just able to thrive as teachers and students. We've had so many great experiences, they go into Broadway, they've had professional orchestras, the Royal Philharmonic Orchestra has come played against, taught with them, professional, um, musicians have played and talked with them, um, to do our shows, as you can see, we're Broadway worthy and we just don't understand why she is not there. Um, so if something, I don't know, I can't think of anything, a, a reason why she wouldn't be as, because she's an amazing person, I can't think of a reason why she wouldn't be there. So this is why we all came here, um, for answers and just as our support for her, because we love her and we want her back in our building.
Mr. Diggs?
Thank you, I appreciate you so much. So, um, good evening, I, very quickly, um, I think that the principal should be, uh, back in the building because we have state exams, we have regences, we have things that students have been preparing for all year long and they need that guidance, they need that leadership and they need that focus and it's hard, as my son is a 10th grader and it's hard to tell him why, or why he should invest in his time when he doesn't have that support. So we would like her back, please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is that it?
Our next speaker is Latoya Anderson.
Hello, everyone, um, I'm actually sharing the same sentiment as Ms. Mack and my name is Latoya Anderson, I'm the PTA president of our school. I'm actually here on behalf of many parents who were not able to be here today, but we would like our principal back in our building, um, our seniors, our eighth grade, uh, eighth graders, they're coming up graduation, moving up ceremony, they're concerned that their principal may not be there and we just want our principal back, so I'm gonna end right there, we have other speakers, so thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Tamika Douglas.
Hello, my name is, I'm Tamika Douglas, I am the parent of a child who attends the Denzel Washington School of the Arts. I have to share a story with you guys. Um, my son has an IEP, he was diagnosed with a learning disability and he had to repeat the ninth grade. Um, through the support of Dr. Collins and all his teachers, he is now graduating with a 4.0 GPA. He has, he has been offered over $800,000 in academic scholarships and it's because of the standard that she set. He was able to, during the pandemic, email his teachers, even during the school year, it didn't matter if it was on the weekend or the evenings, they all made himself available to him and it's because of the standard that she set. So we would like to have her back, right? She's very important to the student body, she sets a high standard for the students and the teachers and, um, we miss her very much.
Our next speaker is Houston Watson.
And please refrain from using names.
I'm sorry?
Please refrain from using names.
Okay, so I'll just use my name. My name's Houston Watson. Um, my wife and I moved to Mount Vernon because we thought that we were going to be getting into a better situation for our children in the schools and that took a while to actually happen, but it did happen. I have a son who graduated the first class out of Denzel Washington School, I have a daughter who's currently in the ninth grade, uh, at the Denzel Washington School. Neither of them could have imagined themselves any other place other than where they were and the biggest reason they were able to not just achieve, uh, at that school, but was to fly, had to do with the principal who was there at the time and somehow has disappeared. And I personally find it extremely disrespectful that we have not heard anything as to what was going on, um, with the principal. If, if, if any of your children were attending that school, you would want to know. Extremely disrespectful. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melanie Watson.
My name is Melanie Moses Watson and, uh, thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak to you. Um, my daughter, my, my husband just spoke and I have the same sentiment as everyone here. Um, we need to have the principal back in the building. The, the, now, the district has done a good job in trying to communicate with us with the robo calls, the food pantry, the weather alerts and all of that, but yet we have failed to get any sort of letter or indication as to why our principal has disappeared from our high school and I think that is also very disrespectful. We should at the very least have a letter, uh, an email or something explaining a little bit about what's going on, it doesn't have to give all the details, but we need to know what is going on. So I, I feel that we need to have her back in the building. The other point is that the students have really been traumatized by COVID, they've been traumatized by this heinous, violent act in our district and that students are feeling abandoned and helpless and disempowered and by not having their principal there to give them support, that, that is a tragedy and a travesty and we need to have her back in the building. So I implore you, please to have our principal back in the building, at least before the end of the school year and that will provide a lot of support, a lot of confidence to help the students move forward. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anissa Vincent. Anissa Vincent, remind you, please use no names.
Good evening. A few weeks ago...
A few weeks ago, I addressed the board about the principal at the Denzel Washington School of Arts. I asked that you return our principal to the building swiftly because our children are being affected. Certain activities are not taking place, and the children are aware of her absence and are taken full advantage. They are doing things that they know would not be tolerated if Dr. Collins was present. It seems as though my request has fallen on deaf ears and not taken seriously. Your self-serving attitude and the attitude of if my child isn't thriving, no one's child should thrive, is appalling. Parents, students and staff are being affected by this egotistical attitude of self-indulgent people who want to control others. And once their domination is halted, they pull in favors from their board members, concoct a story, and one with a false narrative. These same board members sit here with their own problems of alcoholism, domestic violence and neglect.
Ma'am, this is not appropriate. This is not appropriate.
No, it is not appropriate. Excuse me.
High ironic. Please remove thine own plank. I don't know how long an investigation takes and who is actually qualified to do the investigation at this point, but I come to you again asking to restore our principal. We, as parents, are fully prepared to escalate at this point. I have been in contact with Denzel Washington Foundation, Debbie Allen, Felicia Rashad, and I am in full, in full capacity and in full mode to escalate this to the next level and bring in outside people to help us bring about this injustice of removing our principal. You can try to silence me, but it won't. It won't happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it?
We have two more. Our next speaker is Evelyn Feldman.
Can we put a cap on this?
We have five minutes. We have five minutes.
This is ridiculous. 100%.
Good evening, board. My name is Evelyn Feldman, and I am a Mount Vernon taxpayer with children in various schools in the district. While I'm not coming here before you to brag of any Grammys in my household yet, I am an art professional and do come with an extensive time periods of my life spent in arts educational institutions in Europe and the US. As a creative, the social and emotional environment you are in are cornerstones, and your heads of the art schools are critical masks for your path to fail or to sail. Here in Mount Vernon, since my children entered pre-K and today, I, as an involved and early childhood music advocating parrot, have experienced and worked with seven different principals this district has hired at the schools my children were or are in. My son was one of the Lincoln Lion honors students and built a strong identity. Then we were redistricted, and the environment at Pennington caused my son to shut down interest in learning and imploded. And the environment at Pennington caused, and he said, "Nobody cares. Why should I?" The Atlas Program and the Saturday Arts was his saving grace. And eventually, he found his way back into his own in a place where he is seen, heard and respected and loved at Denzel. His New Year's resolutions include higher overall goals, which he has kept ever since his start there. From having witnessed and suffered the aftermath of an unresolved principal situation earlier, I am adamant and desperate in reminding you how crucial it is for our children's growth to have a solid presence ahead of school, in place, with consistency. Someone with mature leadership skills, tall enough to have parents and teachers called into the auditorium to tackle together an arising issue or problem at the earliest stage and with offering transparency and parent-community collaboration. She has earned my trust. She has these qualities others never do. I experience her as deeply invested, open-minded, respectful and engaging, and with an invaluable vision and community love. I appreciate her strong character and personality. That's what you need in an art school. I have experienced that.
Ma'am, your time is up. Please finish.
Mount Vernon has a gift with her. To reinstate her presence would ensure for our creative children to have consistency, a true solid team culture and viable path seen through, the trust and culture to become ready and able to conquer this world as strong humans. That would be my reason to want to keep my child in this district.
Our last speaker is David Patterson.
Before I begin, I want to thank you guys because I know every single one of you is a volunteer, and there's just no reason why somebody would do a personal attack, regardless if we have a difference of opinion. We're going to have a difference of opinion, especially people of color, with respect and dignity that you would want your children to show. So shame on you for that.
Thank you.
I want to talk about the bullying situation, or the talk about bullying. In the rush, in an attempt to eliminate bullying in our school, have a good one.
Yep.
We want to manage to not overuse the language of bullying. Bullying is a problem, yes. However, there are a lot of people that use this term to essentially take over the words that ordinarily would be normal disputes amongst children. So I heard tonight, parents talk about very violent acts that occurred to their own children, and I wonder, the students that committed those offenses, was this their first time violating the law or violating rules? Were there red flags that could have been raised as an alarm that could have prevented these situations? But I'm here to talk about solutions. So here lies the problem. In the media predating George Floyd, there was a longstanding systemic problem of the demonization of young men of color, the conjuring up of scare tactics to make people feel unsafe in the presence of young black men and women, in the absence of data, which we saw itself rear its ugly head when the media was talking about Black Lives Matter burning down cities. Some of those cities, we actually live and work in. So we know that they were not burned down. The same tactic goes for school safety. The alarm gets sounded often about the condition of schools and how safe they are. So I'm asking, how safe are our schools? And I'm asking, how do you know this? And guess what? As always, I'm asking about specific measurable data to support that response. I'm a dean of students for a K-8 school in the Bronx for 15 years, so I have some good ideas on this. New York City has a Blue Book. Regardless if you're in Manhattan on the Upper West Side or in the middle of Bed-Stuy, the same code applies. There's leveled infractions, so it tells you the type of issues each school has. They also have a ladder of referrals, so the options of whether a student gets detention, a parent meeting, or suspended is all in writing, and it's all equitable, regardless of race, background or what have you. What about students that are suspended? I really don't even know. What happens to a Mount Vernon child that brings a weapon into school? Do they get suspended? And where do they go? Do they go to a suspension site? Or do they stay home with the same adults that are willing to provide them transportation to commit an unlawful act? That seems to be something that we need to think about. Students have an OSIS number to track the pathway to higher offenses, so we know which kids are doing the lower offenses and who's an at-risk child to commit these major offenses, because we want to keep these things from occurring.
10 seconds, Mr. Patterson.
It gives you a snapshot on who your high flyers are. We also have an ORS report, so that students going from school to school, you actually can track who they are, instead of them going from one school to another and then there being that finding out period. So I will wrap up, I swear. How can you make schools safer without knowing this data? How many students are committing infractions? What percentage of kids are doing infractions, Level 4, Level 5? What patterns do you see that's going to lead to these things? And lastly, and most important, are fractions connected to kids with IEPs? Are we punishing students that are doing manifestations of their disabilities and potentially violating their civil rights? Instead of making people scared of our young men, young men and women of color with hyperbole and taglines, let's find some solutions. I'm always available.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
We'll have a motion to go into executive session, please.
Second.
For the purpose of discussing a particular person or persons.
And legal advice.
And legal advice.
And how long will we be?
I think it's about an hour, is what we said.
So we'll be back at 8:30?
Yes. We need a vote, please, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, abstain? Okay.
Adrian, I...
We are. It shouldn't be, but you know how you guys are.
And at this point in time, we, we know we have improved. And we are in a rut. We got to move. And as I said to many people, it's okay to lead, but I also say to them, if you are not going to lead, then you may leave. And now is the time to get off that bus, so that we can put people on who is definitely going to lead. And I said it with love. I said it with the amount of respect as much as possible. And they understand that, and they have pledged their support to work with the entire Mount Vernon City School District. It's not about Dr. B.C., it's about the entire team, and we are going to move this district forward. I also want to share with you that... Hold on, let me continue. Just give me a second. I also want to share with you that tonight, the board will be voting on a proposal from Altaris Consulting Firm and Brigus Consulting Firm. And this is a security firm. As soon as we vote on them tonight, they will be in the schools tomorrow doing evaluation and assessments, because I'm very serious about the security. I met with the security team yesterday because I know they felt more or less demoralized because, you know, I mean, kids are punching on them, and they don't know what to do and how to do anymore because they feel that nobody was listening to them. But I was there yesterday, and I spoke with them, and they felt so much better. There was one security guard who got injured last week. I spoke to him Friday night. He's doing fine. But we cannot allow that to happen, because I have zero tolerance for putting your hand on somebody. I don't care who you are, and that's not going to happen. Whether it's kids or whether it's adults, it's not going to happen. I won't tolerate it. And the security guards felt a little bit more better that we really have their backs. So please join me in supporting them. And I even said to my cabinet, when you go into buildings, just don't go into buildings just to look around, but speak to them, you know, recognize them, you know, and say hello, good morning, how are you doing? It's not just about being, doing the job, but about how are you doing on a daily basis? So that's going to change moving forward. And it starts with me, and this is why I'm going around doing my little tours, doing my little meetings and showing people what I expect. Because I'm not a woman of words, but I'm a woman of action, and I expect everybody to follow the rules or my example of what I'm going to do. I also want to say too, we have to hold parents accountable. And even any parents who are listening tonight, as one, as one parent came to the podium and said, "You have to talk to your kids." And I know while we were talking about, you know, ask kids how they're doing during the course of the day, trustee, the vice president said to me, "Oh, they have to look on their phones." Yes, parents, you got to look on their phones. I know they're more savvy than you do, but you have to learn to see what's happening on the phone and learn. They can teach you. But at the same time, I'm saying, parents, it starts with you. You know, the school district will help you, but you have to start talking to your kids and start seeing what they're doing and show some interest in your, in your child. Because I was talking to a parent today, and she said to me, "You know what? I, I've lost control, you know, and I don't know what to do. So can you help me?" And it was hard to hear her say that, but you know what? She was being honest. And I said to her, "I'm going to work with you, because don't sit down there and you need help and you don't ask for it." We are here to help you, and I keep saying that. And I know some of them do not know how to help. Saturday, after I, I'm going to get to that in a minute, after that wellness event there, 2 o'clock, I went and I joined a group of people in Mount Vernon because they wanted to speak to me, because I'm a politician. I just don't run, I just don't have any seat to run for. But I, yes. But I, I listen to them and I hear them out. And they also feel marginalized because they're in the community. They have nobody to talk to. They're afraid to talk to people because they are coming from a different country, and they are not stable, and they don't know where to go, how to go. And it is, it is so sad, but I'm going to create a platform. And I need everybody, all board members, because I'm saying that moving forward as of July 1, I'm going to have a conversation with my trustees up here as how we're going to have a working board, you know? A working board, meaning that we are going to go into community. We're going to work with our folks. I have no chip on my shoulder. I have no chip on my shoulder by having the board of trustees go in and have conversation with the community. No chip on my shoulder. But we will walk within the margin. We'll have that line, that fine line, and we will do what we got to do for kids. And when parents, I'm going to warn parents, when you come to speak at our podium, if you come with a suggestion, be prepared to join my team to make sure that that solution goes in. And I'm, and I've started tonight with Mr. Patterson. He talks about, yes, how we can solve the problems with suspension, where the kids go. So he's on my community team. So anybody come to the podium and speak, be prepared that you are going to be on that team. So don't come to me with a problem and you don't have a solution, because you're going to give me those solutions. I take those solutions, okay? And we work. So I just want everybody to know that. And last, let me get off the mic, is that on Saturday, our parent liaisons in the room, I have to tell you, those are wonderful people. And they put on a wellness fair, and it was so successful. I have to say that it was great. We have politicians. Everybody came out. As a matter of fact, they're in the room. Come and talk about it, guys. Just come to the podium and talk about it.
Yes, come, come, come.
Don't be shy.
Come on, ladies. Yeah, show those beautiful faces.
And I also, and I also want to thank the trustees who work with them, alongside with them too.
Here we go. Hi. Good evening, Dr. Bennett Conroy, President Saunders and all trustees. So yes, this past Saturday, we were able to have our first wellness fair from 10 to 2, held at the field at the Honor Academy, formerly known as Homeschool. The health fair was a terrific opportunity to further our mission and goals when it comes to community engagement, community empowerment and community education. It was a great opportunity for our families to get out, meet and greet each other while getting health information and having some fun. We had over 400 participants representing all our schools in the district. Parents had the chance to visit our Mount Vernon Basics Table, where they learned about the program and the five pillars that highlight the parenting and caregiving principles that support the early brain development in infants and toddlers. They had the chance to pick books out to start their children's libraries at home. Parents and students had an opportunity to participate in Zumba and yoga classes, get the information on walking clubs. Children had the chance to jump in the Tumbaa Bus, do hopscotch, agility drives, hula hoop, face painting and designing their own T-shirts with the T-shirt spin machine. Parents had the chance to do blood pressure screenings, get information on nutrition and offered a variety of health, education information and resources from all vendors. It was a fantastic way for families to connect with our health and insurance agencies in the community. A great assortment of fresh produce were provided to our families. Additionally, we had healthy snacks and water to hand out. The parent liaisons had a table with giveaways that consisted of everything from household... items, clothing, to office supplies. There were nine raffles drawn, with the main prize being a bike, that one of my Williams students, yay, won, right? We want to thank all the amazing vendors. Health fairs really are an invaluable service to the community, that can be an exciting and rewarding experience for everyone, while emphasizing the practice of good health habits, and we look forward to doing this again next year, or in the fall, yay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And that concludes the superintendent report. All right, so I'm gonna ask Madam President to come with me, we're gonna present a plaque to one of our trustees who's leaving us. And we're gonna miss him, but you know what, we know he has a law degree, so we always gonna be calling on him from time to time, to give us some advice. So even though he's leaving the board, he's not leaving us, because I'm gonna make sure we have, we're gonna find some use for him, because let me tell you something, he has a lot of knowledge, legal-wise, and I personally, Mr. Owen, I'm gonna call on you. You've been asking me a lot of questions at the board meetings, so now you have a lot more to answer for me, and I'm not just saying this because I'm on the mic. If I say I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do something. So I'm definitely gonna call on you, you are, I'm gonna make you work. You make me work, I'm gonna make you work. Okay? So with that, I want to present you with the plaque, so let me go down.
That is the cue.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, this plaque is presented to trustee Micah McCoen. In recognition of your dedication to the children of the Mount Vernon City School District, we thank you for everything you have contributed to us. This is not there, and we hope to call you back. Okay, but it's not there. All right.
Look at you, gonna send it back.
Oh my gosh. No, you're gonna make me cry.
This is my campaign photo, when I first ran seven years ago. And that's my third grader now. I usually have a handkerchief, I'm sorry. No, I just wanted to thank everyone, current and past trustees, I've learned something from all of you, including many who are not here anymore. Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, thank you, Dr. B.C., and the rest of the administration, I've learned something from each of you. And thank you to those in the community who supported me, especially people who literally supported me like 10 minutes after meeting me, seven years ago, which is a really weird But I can truly say that the ties I have, the ties I have with this community, you can't get any other way than through service. It doesn't have to be this kind of service, and I've done this service for seven years, and I'm gonna find different ways to serve now. And yes, Dr. B.C., I'm happy to take your calls. I've already told you, I'm happy to stay on as advisor on the policy committee, I've been doing that the whole time, I'm happy to continue helping with that. And of course, the biggest thank you is to my family, and for the many sacrifices that they have made, for the many, many, many board meetings, and emails and calls and everything over the years. I just want to share kind of three thoughts, that I've been trying to think about what I've taken away from this experience. And I think the first thing is that we get so much farther along by being positive, by approaching people with optimism, by assuming the best. When, and that's true when you're a community member, approaching your teacher, or coming to a board meeting, it's also true of us as board members, when we reach out to the administration. Negativity is a cancer, and it accomplishes almost nothing, except to make the problem worse. And there's almost, in every situation, you can find a way to approach it with positivity. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And so I encourage all of us to stay positive, and be optimistic when you approach people, and assume that a solution is there, and work to find it, and don't just complain. The second thing is the power of one. I have seen so many times, both in public, in my own school, in my own experiences, and also frankly, in executive sessions, in confidential situations, how key one person can be, and that can be a destructive force. One toxic person can ruin a meeting, can bring down a whole venture, and can destroy good potential. But one positive influence, one great, amazing teacher, as we saw just tonight, right? One vocal member of the community, one principal, one staff member, one pastor, whoever it is, you have amazing power to influence politically too. I was, you know, it was a new experience for me to come and get involved in local politics and realize that most elections in this city are won or lost by less than 200 votes, right? Every year. That's you and your Facebook friends. So if, I mean, if you, if you have more than 200 friends, you can decide who wins elections here. That's crazy, but that's how it is, and if you're not using that power, you're wasting it. And the last thing I want to say is that the only limits that Mount Vernon faces are self-imposed, that it is division that limits us, whether that's the city and the school district being divided, or that's us being divided within our board, or that's a division between the board and the superintendent administration. That's it, that's, everything that we, when we look at a limit or a problem, it always comes down to that, it comes down to people being divided. Because when we are united, there's no limit, there's no limit to what we can accomplish. So again, thank you for this, I'm not going away, I'm gonna, my wife's PTA president, and I have lots of other ideas already of how to help, but I really appreciate this experience again, and thank you to everyone over these many very enlightening years, and I love Mount Vernon in a way that I didn't seven years ago, and it's because of all of you.
One hour?
Take it.
All right.
Just want to say something really quick. So when I came on the board, okay, I was, I sat here and I said, "Who is this guy that keeps wearing these bow ties every day? Is it this serious? Do we really have to wear bow ties at these?" Because the first time I came in, I wore a plaid shirt, like I'm slumming it today, right? But I want to say this, seven years in this city, how long you been in the city?
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half years in the city of Mount Vernon. We have people that have been born, raised, educated, and still live here for over a quarter of a century, and they don't have, have not shown half the passion and the love that this man has just shown to our city and our school district. So I salute you every day, because nobody policies like Micah policies. You're the calmest guy in the room, and the smartest guy in the room at the same time, and I've learned from you that you don't have to jump up and be a knee-jerk decision-maker to be effective, and you never have to raise your voice even once to do it. I salute you for that, in here and outside of here.
Thank you.
We friends for life.
Thanks. I just, I want to say for the record that this is the same bow tie that I'm wearing tonight, in this picture. However, I can no longer fit into these pants. That doesn't happen.
So it was very difficult for me to run against Micah. You know it, his wife knows it. And I met Micah as a parent, as one of the coaches of Mount Vernon, tsunamis, little kids, soccer coaches, my husband and I, we used to be the coaches of our babies, and of course, I can't believe you are so big already. And I remember the times that, you know, he used to come, and you just talk about the board, and I was like, "Oh my God, how can he do this? Look at me, where I'm at now." And yes, I do have to agree with you, Warren, you have a calmness that, between you and my husband, I don't understand it. I don't get it. But you guys get things done, and I am, I appreciate you. I appreciated you when you were a parent of, you know, your wonderful son in our soccer league, I appreciate you as my colleague here, and I appreciate you as a parent. Thank you for everything, everything.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have to move on. Micah, we love you, I think we all have the same, but we gotta finish this.
Yeah, we got business.
We'll come back around and give you more love.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay? All right, I promise. I do. Okay, so we're gonna move right along. What did he say? Oh, okay.
There you go.
All right, so we're moving on, we're not gonna do committee reports, we're gonna go to HR.
We have a motion and a second for item 5.1, Approval of Human Resources Memorandum 59A and 59B. A motion, please.
Motion.
A second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? I have a motion to approve 6.1, School Improvement Service Memo, S. 2218. A motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a question. This Altaris, this Altaris group, what is their, what is their expertise specifically with respect to school security, as opposed to just security of other types of environments?
Okay, there are two groups inside there, Altaris and Brigger. Brigger's on the ground.
Is your mic on, Dr. B.C.?
Now, Altaris and Brigger, the both of them are there. Brigger is the one who's on the ground, where you have a director of security, who always gonna make sure that if our securities are short, we can always take from their company. Now, Altaris is the one that most school districts use, and they are doing all the compliance issues, the training, all the tabletop exercises, and how, we're also doing the cyber, the cyber-
Social media monitoring.
Social media monitoring, and all of that from Altaris. So they work through BOSsies, we get like 63.7% of the money that we gave them, and they are in all the other school districts around. And we find out that with our president's security company that we have, there's a lot of things that we needed, that we didn't have, that we need to bring here to Mount Vernon, just like other school districts, to make it more safer.
Okay, and I just want to be clear, because I read through the contract, my understanding is this includes one full-time employee of Altaris, not of the district, but employee of Altaris, is gonna be full-time for our district-
Yes.
-plus other consulting-
Yes.
-services. And where is that person gonna be based? Physically, physically?
Well, they're gonna be based at the high school.
Okay.
That's where the offices.
Yeah, okay.
Did you want our question?
Okay.
I have a question. So with Brigger being on the grounds, and their safety agents coming into the school, what, I mean- Their connection to our community, how does that work?
Well, you see, they deal with all the other school districts that we have, and the last time they were here presenting, and if you look into their booklet, they tell you what companies they have, they have White Plains, Rye, all over. So New Rochelle, they are there, and the connection that they have is that they were recommended to me by three different other superintendents, who have them in their district, and they said, "You really do need them to be in yours," and they came heavily, I mean, recommended.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, on the motion, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 6.2, School Improvement, I have a motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Second. Okay, comments on School Improvement, 6.2, Personnel Memorandum? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, 7.1, we're now in the business office, a motion, please, on Athletic Trainer to Travel to Philadelphia?
Motion.
Comments, please?
Yeah, I had a question about this. Why, I have no problem with people attending, you know, people attending conventions and getting professional training, this is great, but why are we paying for a rental car, and gas and tolls? Just put her on the train. Why is she taking, why are you paying for a rental car? And parking for the rental car?
We found out, because we had pulled this tab like last week before, and we found out that if she had used her own car, and we have to reimburse her for the gas and everything else that she was having, it would be more expensive than what we normally would have done. So when we break, when we separated both, and we compare what she did last year and the year before, and to this year, it's much cheaper by having her renting the car, and putting, and giving her the gas in it. So that's why we did that, we did.
It's cheaper to rent a car and pay-
Than what she was asking for, for her own, using her own car. Because last year, she used her own car and get the gas, and it was much more expensive than what we had. I spoke to Mr. Samina about it, and that was the rationale he provided. So, but this is a mandated training that she has to do regardless.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay. So it's a mandated training, and the, once, so she's driving from here-
To Philadelphia.
To Philadelphia?
And I was presented with two different options, and this was the cheaper options, cheaper option.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, on the motion, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? I'm abstaining from this.
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Oh, yes, we have five then, okay.
Where's Melissa? Does she vote?
Oh, then we don't have, we don't have five if she doesn't vote.
You want to come back? You want to come back to this resolution? She just went to the ladies' room or something?
So we'll go on to the next one and come back?
Sure.
Okay, 7.2, Authorization for Grimes' Travel to Chester, New York.
Motion.
That's for 40 students and five chaperones.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next, 7.3, Accepted Donor- Okay, the next 7.3, Accepted Donation of $400 for the principal at Cecil Parker School to purchase school supply. Wish items for the summer school staffing. A motion, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next is 7.4, Accepted Donation for the Athletic Department. Uh, motion, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next is, uh, 7.5, Approve a Grant Disbursement Agreement Between the School District and the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York. So, uh, let me get a motion, please, and then I'll just explain it briefly.
Motion.
Second.
So this and also 7.6 are the same, same requirement. The 7.5 is from a grant that we got five, six years ago for the site work at the Graham School. It has taken us six years to get this, even though it's done years ago, to get this money in place to be paid back to us. The Dormitory Authority manages all the grants. We have documents that have to be signed. Our attorney has to approve it. And, uh, once this is, this approval tonight will be the next to last thing. Then the attorney will approve it and we will get our million dollars for the Graham site work. I oft have to tell you that that was loaned by the bond. We did not have the money for this million dollars, nor the million dollars for the culinary, uh, kitchen. So the bond had extra money at that time and loaned the money for these two projects. This will return the mon, both of these will return a million dollars each to the bond and will allow us, as soon as we settle one, uh, matter having to do with a contractor, having to do with the bond, we will then have monies, we hope, uh, to manage the Grimes Annex. Um, and, well, I'll stop there. We're not sure what else. But we expect shortly to have approval from the state on, um, on some of these things and we will be able to move forward. So this is, this is the final step to get these $2 million back.
That's what I was asking about.
Okay, uh, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? So 7.6 is the same thing. Can I, a motion on that? That's for the culinary kitchen?
Motion.
Um, second, please?
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Note, note that trustee was not here for the vote.
Yep.
Uncle Jones.
You want to come back?
No, we have enough.
It passes.
We're okay. Uh, all in favor of 7.6?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, next is, uh,
Go back to 7.1 since Melissa's here.
Uh, but we, we're missing, uh,
Wait for TJ.
Somebody else. What, oh, she, I think we should wait for her to come back for that. Okay, next is, uh,
Here she comes.
Okay, we're going back to 7.2. No, 7.1.
7.1.
The Athletic Trainer. We had, uh, a motion and a second. We had three people abst, um, abstain and we were missing one, uh, one person to have a, uh, enough of a vote. So we'll take another vote, please.
I'm sorry, um, I was clearly not here at the moment. What was the issue that people seemed like, because I missed the conversation?
So this was to send an athletic trainer to, uh, to Phil, it was related to the, the method of travel. Yes, yes.
Is there another option?
The other option was to use her car and we give her an allowance.
Isn't there another option?
There's, there's got to be another option.
There's not a train, plane, bus?
Right. No, those are the two options I was presented with.
Oh.
They, they, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abst, uh, opposed?
This is 7.1.
7.1.
Opposed? You're opposed, so this motion does not, uh, does not pass.
But we want the person to go to training.
I, I was going to say, we want it.
And, and it's, it's the, the, I, I,
It, it doesn't cost a thousand dollars to get to Philadelphia. It doesn't. I'm sorry. Doesn't cost a thousand dollars.
But, yeah. But at the same time, we have been doing it over the years and, and those are the two options we get. And we chose the most expensive options. So this year, when they presented the two options to me, I chose the least expensive one because she has to do that. So that's what we,
But why can't she take the train and then take an Uber from the train station to the place that she's staying?
I don't know, maybe I could ask her that if you want me to do that, but, um,
I, I understand paying for the travel.
Yeah, 100%.
I understand about paying for the travel part or paying, paying for the convention, right? And paying for the travel. I, I have an issue with her or whoever it may be having to, the, the rental of the car part, I, 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 something about that don't sound right.
So,
I don't know, something about it just don't sit right with me. I, I would rather, I would rather her catch a flight to Philly.
Okay, all right, so,
And, and, or, or, or get on the Amtrak and then catch whatever she have to catch instead of her driving. That sounds, that sounds, something about that sounds just bananas.
Okay, so do you want to table this?
We'll table that.
We'll pull this and table.
Table and find, find the, the person that's listening, find a flight, find a, find a, find an Amtrak or something like that to get there. That driving thing, that's, that's,
Okay, so we have time. All right, so we have time. We'll figure out another option. All right, so we did 7.1.
We're at 7.7 now.
We're at 7.7. Okay, let's stay here, guys.
7.7.
Target, stay on target.
7.7.
Stay focused.
A Students to Accept the Donation from Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers. Uh, motion, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay.
Thank you.
7.8 is a hundred dollar donation from Lori Lee Miller to accompany Cecil Higgins Parker. Uh, motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next is Student Services Mem,
Can we just pause and acknowledge we have four donation tabs tonight? This is great. This is fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, uh, 8, 8.1, Approval of Student Services Memorandum Number 20, Dated May 17th. A motion, please?
A motion.
Motion.
Second, please?
Second.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we need a motion to postpone that. Do we, do we have a motion to postpone that other?
7.1.
7.1.
We tabled it.
We tabled it.
Do we need a motion to do that?
No.
Okay.
We, I'll come back to that in a minute.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we're on Student Services 8.1. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I'm in favor, yes, yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to 7.1. Can we have a motion to table the Athletic Trainer Travel?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay.
The 28th?
June 28th.
June or July?
Okay, good.
28th. Okay, all in favor of the motion to table, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, we're now on, um, 8.2, Authorization Hiring of Staff to Conduct the 2223 Adult Education Program. Uh, motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Comments?
I have some questions about this. This is the, this is the adult ed program at Lincoln. We've done this for many years, correct? Yes. How does this budget compare to previous years?
The last, last year is the same one. It hasn't been changed. It hasn't been changed. We had it last year, the same budget from last year, the same one we bring back. And nothing changes, um, except that we add one more teacher to, to the budget. And Dr. Kim, you can talk about it if you want to because it's honor you.
I, I want to begin by saying that we've had a program, this program in the district for many years. And, and for the most part, it's a GED program. I, I am excited that we had a student pass the GED this year and that doesn't necessarily happen that often. So this is a program in which we have stu, adult learners come in. They want to obtain their GED or you have English, um,
A second language?
Second language learners. Um, I think that they have, the population has increased. We, even during the pandemic, we had many students. And it's a successful program. For, uh, the enrollment was down. It has increased. That's why we increased staff last year and this year. So, um, we've gotten a lot of support from the state. The state is applauding our efforts. The person in charge of the program has done a tremendous job.
What else do we offer other than GED and English and second language?
Those are, that's the program.
And how do, how do people find out about this? How do we recruit students to this program?
First 800 robocalls? Oh, sorry.
You mean, uh, the K-12 alert, word of mouth? Um, there's a flyer that goes out.
Yeah, I'm just asking, like, as a poll, like, what percentage? I, I'm curious as to how adults find out about this program.
The K-12 alert, flyers, you know, parents. There's a significant, um, Hispanic population that attends Lincoln. So a lot of their, their parents attend the program as well. Yeah. It has grown. There's another teacher, um,
Um, have we? Sorry.
Have you guys discussed on expanding the off, like, what class we offer?
Communicating.
So, uh, basically, this is a state-run program.
Okay.
They determine what should be offered to our, you know, to our program.
Mm-hmm. It's a grant.
Um, it is a grant. We're entitled, it's entitlement. We're entitled and it's based on student enrollment. So, um, we have a person that has to maintain the data in order for us to receive the funding. So how can we, um, ask the, the state to offer other courses? Is there any?
Let's talk about that because that's something Melissa and I talked about in the past. So let's stay on this, on this one resolution, okay?
Okay.
All right, so let's, uh, let's, we, we have a motion out there?
Yes, we do. We, we're ready for a vote. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next, we have, uh,
I know where you're going, Kim.
We have, uh, minutes, um, 11.1, minutes of four, of April 5th. Uh, motion, please?
Motion.
Motion? Wow, we have four minutes?
Okay, um, I'm assuming there's no comments on the minutes. Uh, uh, all in favor?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You did a second on it?
I, I got a second.
You did, okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I just need, bear with me, my computer. I got, I missed some of these meetings, so I need to abstain from some of them, but I can't. I'm trying to see which ones I was not here for. Ah, here we go.
You were here for that one?
Yes, yes.
You were here for 4:5.
That's right.
I was not here. I'm, I'm abstaining. It was trustee White. 4:5.
Okay.
4:5, I have to abstain.
All in favor who were here?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So we have, uh, six. We have, uh, minutes of, um, I lost it.
4:19.
4:19.
Motion.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're abstaining.
I can't get it to load. Was I here, you got it?
You were here.
You was here, Micah. You were here, Micah.
Okay.
You were here, Micah.
I'll vote in favor then.
Okay.
Cynthia, you were not on this one.
Yeah, she abstained. She abstained.
She abstained. Also, I didn't hear, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one, you were not, Micah.
Okay, the next one is the minutes of, uh, April 26th. The motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
No, I was here.
We're all here.
Okay, yeah, it was just the last meeting.
This is April 26th. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? And finally, the minutes of May 4th. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain.
What, your minutes took that half now?
Okay, the next thing is we have a motion to recess.
Executive session?
Executive session.
Executive session. Okay, for the purposes of.
We're going to another executive.
Yeah, we're going to another executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
See the guy in the suit?
So we are going to recess. We need a motion to recess until the votes are finished. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Fifth.
Okay, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Wow.
Is the camera off?
So we have executive, right?
No.
Oh, I might just do it.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't certify the actual ballots. Now, it's too close.
Yeah, it's still not. I hate this part. Oh, outside one?
I told you numbers all up, y'all don't answer. I'm like, y'all trying to set me up. It's alright. And I say, what?
I'm like, oh shit.
Me backwards. We cannot have this fucking way. Oh fuck. No. No. No.
We can't, we can't certify the absentee ballots. Now that it's too close. Between Melissa and Melissa. The best thing to do is show her what she said. He's fifty-three votes ahead of his eighteen-year ballots. And they first up through their past ballots.
So we say so. Oh yeah, but that's when we do the absentee. We have to proof out the machines. Um, yeah. Because when we do the tape inside.
You want cops to over that?
Um, that's when we do the. And then you read the tape. But if this is set up here. Oh, so it's usually not doing the absentee. So, so, uh.
It's wrong.
That's also wrong.
It is so bad.
You put me in your polls.
So.
Sorry, my first.
I don't think that's happening.
Because you're like.
I think he might have a fucking one with his fucking tits.
Bye y'all.
Pick me up. Because now I'm not leaving. No, I'm not leaving. Am I gonna hit her? She's fucking bullshit. I'm more afraid of her than what she's on me.
You need to control yourself. And you need to stop lying.
Okay, y'all, y'all gotta leave these words alone. Leave these words alone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Leave these words alone.
Let's stop, let's stop playing with those words. Let's get back together again.
So we're gonna have a motion, a motion to reconvene?
So we need a, a motion to reconvene from our executive session. Can I have a, a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, all in favor of reconvening?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? So there's seven people here now. Okay, so, um.
Where's Alice?
She went that way. With a pile of papers.
The purpose of reconvening right now is to certify the, uh, the vote on the budget and the vote on the candidates. And in the absence of the district clerk, um, the board voted on February fifteenth for Alice to be the acting clerk, uh, in the, in the absence of the regular district clerk. Uh, we have that resolution if you need to see it. So Alice will, um, uh, certify that the, uh, the vote we know will not change regardless of the absentee ballots, the result of the, the budget and the, uh, the election of the three candidates. So Alice, will you just speak to that?
Can you speak to the mic?
Three candidates with the highest number gets a three-year term. And one candidate, the fourth highest number get the completion of term. And I, looking at the numbers, we certif- certified the vote for the election and there's eighty-nine af- absentee ballots. So that won't change the count in a, in any way.
Okay, that's good.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Yep, so we need, uh, a motion to certify the results of the election having to do with the budget and the three candidates who will serve a three-year term starting July first. And the fourth candidate who will serve a term starting tonight, if that person is sworn in tonight, and which will go through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Right, so can we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Accepting the results?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, abstain? So we have six, one, and oh. So the results of the election are certified. Congratulations to all the winners. Um, and thank you. And so now we, we, we adjourn? Need a motion?
Motion.
Yes.
The library trustee, it was one full-time and one completion of term. So it won't be enough absentee ballots, I don't think it would change.
So I don't know that we are responsible for certifying the results of the library's election. I, I just don't know that.
Are we, Tom? Tom, are we? Tom.
Mr. Scapoli? Do, we, we don't certify the results of the library election, correct? Okay. Okay, so any other comments? So can we have a, a motion to, uh? Adjourn, please?
Motion.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Alice.